Good afternoon and welcome. I'm Adam Block, Chair of the Needham Planning Board, and I call this meeting to order. I apologize for the disruption if our dog is barking right outside my door. This meeting of the planning board is being conducted in a remote manner consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. For the record, I will now confirm attendance of planning board members. When I call your name, please respond that you are present. Paul Albert.
I am present.
Very good. Artie Crocker.
Yes, yes, yes.
Gene McKnight.
Present.
Natasha Spada.
Present.
Very good. And obviously, present. Planning staff, Lee Newman.
Present.
Alex Cle.
Present.
Very good. For those participating in this meeting, please be aware that anything you share or state will be a matter of public record, and others may be able to see you or hear you. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website, which is needhamma.gov, unless otherwise noted. The ground rules of this meeting are designed to allow for an accurate public record. I will introduce any speakers in our agenda after they conclude their remarks. Board members will be asked for any comments, motions, or questions. The only item on our agenda today is the decision for a major project site plan special permit number two thousand twenty-two dash zero-two by Bull Finch as petitioner for the property located at five fifty-seven Highland Avenue. First of all, do any of you have any comments or questions about this draft?
No, I've, I've gone through it this morning and I'm, I'm quite satisfied with it, especially in light of our discussions a few nights ago.
Okay, anyone else?
Yes.
Looks like Jean has her hand up and then I also have a.
Oh, okay. Yes, I likewise went through it and was satisfied. But I failed to notice that the issue of solar ready for the garage had not been addressed. And I didn't see, Artie, I very much appreciate Artie bringing that to our attention. I didn't see that the, the email until just as I tried to zoom into this. So I, I, I think we did discuss this at our last meeting, and it was my expectation that there would be a solar ready on the roof with appropriate language. I thought they had language about, you know, the same language they had for the other buildings about the utilities and the other things. You know what I mean, right? So that I don't know where, what paragraph it should be added to, but I think you had an idea of where such language should go if, if others agree that it should be in.
Yes, it can go into the plan modification section. Which would be, I think it was section two, and I think it was in paragraph. We get to it, A.
What page is that? Do you have a page number?
Just give me a minute to get to it myself. This document is way too long.
Probably, probably a record.
While you're searching for that.
Okay, so is that, Jean is actually it's good, it's on page twenty-seven? Under paragraph A. I mean, we, we call out plan modifications that will be, that are required, and I think we say that the north and the south buildings shall be solar ready and subject to section three twelve. And section three twelve was the section which required the actual installation of those arrays presently. So the question is whether or not you want to have the garage treated differently, just that it's solar ready.
I, I think it has.
Solar ready and requiring the installation.
Let's leave finish, please. Sorry, what, what did you say at the end?
I said that right now, that, that for the north and the south building, it's basically, it requires that they be solar ready, and it actually requires the developer to install the solar currently subject to certain limitations that are expressed in section three twelve. So I think as relates to garage, there's a question of solar ready, which we can certainly modify this to accommodate. But then the question is, do we want those? Do, are we requiring that, that that happened now, or, which is what is happening on the north and the south building, subject to certain, certain conditions?
I see. So the question is whether we're only going to require it to be solar ready or to actually incorporate solar arrays subject to section three twelve.
Correct. I just had the concern, I don't, you remember, you had the concern about the height of that garage as it fronted along Gould Street.
So my, so Artie, you had your hand up.
Yeah, so yeah, so I think we had discussed and rightfully so. Though I would love to see solar on the garage when it first goes up, I mean, that would certainly be my preference. The fact is that we haven't, that was never at any public meeting showing it. I mean, I do have some concerns over that we're not, you know, at some point the garage will come back, and my hope is that it comes back lower than forty-eight feet plus the parapet. But the fact means is, Jean, you rightfully brought up the fact that it hasn't been in a public meeting. So I think the garage is just solar ready. It doesn't have the other parameters going in there. So it's just solar ready. Basically, what that means is it's structurally ready for solar. And perhaps they'll put some, they'll put some chase in there to deal with the conduits and wiring later on. The main thing, the main thing is it's structurally sound for solar. That's the main thing for solar rate to a large degree.
So just, just for clarity on a couple of these things. The, the diagram already that you, that you sent to Lee and Lee that you sent to me showed actually the garage as having, and this is, I think, from the end of September or October meeting. Anyways, it, that perspective drawing said potential solar on the, on the garage. It actually only talked about a mechanical penthouse on nor, on the north and south building. There was no plan that actually showed potential solar on.
Well, we've already been, we've already been, we've already been through that, that it was.
I'm just creating, I'm just providing.
It was talked about at the meetings.
Thank you very much. I'm just already providing a little clarity because, yes, you know, that we're now, you know, that, that, that the developer has agreed to be required to install solar on the north and south building was actually never really part of the plan. And the potential was for the garage, and now we're going to solar ready on the garage with a requirement of the north and south building. Now. Hold on, hold on, I'm not done yet. Please, thank you very much. The other note is that if the garage is sick, you know, if the garage is fifty-five feet and the expectation would be, you know, you know, they have to install a solar canopy above the garage. I, you know, I wonder if that actually exceeds the height of the garage beyond the maximum allowed in the you know, in the in the bylaw. Lee, I saw your note where you said, you know, twenty-five percent of the, you know, twenty-five percent, you know, it's allowed to exceed the height by a certain amount, but I don't know if anyone's done any calculations. But if the board wants to go ahead and make the requirement for solar ready, that could be a violation of the zoning bylaw, then.
Making it, making it solar ready does not, how can that be a violation if soul was not on there?
Right.
At some point in the future.
I didn't say that already.
We may have. That's what you just said, though.
No, Artie, I actually did not say that.
You just said it could be violating the bylaw if we make it solar.
If it's installed, right, the, the intention with solar ready is not to not have it. It's that hopefully it would be installed, right? So it's the installation effort. It's not the readiness.
Correct, correct. At some point in the future, the bylaw may change, which might make it a lot. Because at this point, there's a question mark of whether it would be allowed.
Well, I think under the zoning right now, there's an exemption for solar on the roof up to fifteen feet above the base height. Provided it doesn't cover more than twenty-five percent of the structure. And it's set back a distance from the roof edge equivalent to its height.
Where is that, Lee?
That's in the zoning bylaw, and that's in section four. Four eleven one. Paragraph. E.
Four eleven one E. Thank you very much. Okay, Natasha, I saw that you had your comment, your hand up.
Well, one, one thing is that right now, maybe it doesn't work perfectly with the way that solar is right now, but in the future solar could happen in other ways. So I just want to make sure that if it's solar ready, you know, if it's, if it's solar ready, then we're ready for any kind of technology that could be used in the future, not necessarily what's being used now. So that's one. The other piece is I, I listened to the, to the meeting that I was not able to attend. And you talked about phasing and, and I appreciate the fact that the project may need to be phased. So that's not my issue. The issue is that the project, the two buildings are, are, they're contiguous, even though they're, they're two heights, there's a space, the lobby's in the middle. And so my question in general is, we, I never knew that they were going to be built a separate project so that there could be an opportunity, which again, I think it's, it's realistic. I guess my concern is that I've never seen what, which of the two buildings is going to be built first? Like, so identifying, you know, it's, it's a big difference, one versus the other. And then where would it be cut? Would the lobby be part of the phasing? And, you know, how, how would it look if the other building never gets built, right? And so I guess I, my issue is I'm just concerned that we've never seen a plan for how this is gonna be implemented. And will it cause to still have a parking garage or not? There's a parking garage next to the building.
This is, this is actually all discussed in the draft. It's addressed in the draft.
Right, but it says that it's addressed if, if that happens. I mean, we've never seen it.
So that have to.
It was never proposed to us, that strategy for how this goes forward until I think now, right? And, and I understand why they're doing it, and I don't disagree. My concern is that I have no clue what that means for the site. And building one building before the other one would make a big difference on the site.
Have to come back to us, Natasha. They'd have to come back to us. And they, and I think we did have a bit of a discussion that the intention would be, for instance, if they just built one building, that they would have surface parking. They would not need the requirement to install a garage. And, you know, it would be, otherwise be a significant deviation from the, from this plan. And they'd be required to come to us and present that you know, modified plan. And I think that's actually been an increase as a standard now. We, if I'm not mistaken, that they, I, you know, that they would need, if they do intend to phase, I'll continue a second, Paul. That if I, that if they do intend to phase, that they will present a phasing plan. So it would address all of the points, Natasha, that you're addressing and more. Not intending to do it now, but they, if they intend to subsequently, they need our approval to do it, and will provide a phasing plan with revised documents and site plans and so forth.
Okay, so my only question is would we, in general, prefer, I mean, I think I would prefer to have the building on Highland Avenue be the, the first building built if you're phasing it because it creates an edge for the site versus having the building in the center of the space with a sea of parking around it. So I think because I always saw it as one project. For me, I think it's critical that we understand. You know, if it's being phased, what do they anticipate, the building one or building two, because I would feel uncomfortable with them coming to me with something that is very different than the proposal that was shown to us, and that would create a completely, would create, you know, a completely different.
They have to, they have, but they can't do anything unless they come to us first, Natasha. But having said that, Natasha, all right. Lee, did you want to bring over Robert Slager and Tim Sullivan?
Yeah, I also want to say, though, what we could, I mean, they're talking about phasing. We could allow phasing, provided that the building along the Highland Avenue edge is the first part of that phase. I mean, there's nothing that precludes that. We're allowing them to phase it, but we could say that in order to exercise the phasing option, that building would have to be built first.
Why don't we, why don't we bring over Tim Sullivan, Attorney Tim Sullivan and Robert Slager, which.
May I say something first before we bring others in on this, on this subject? May I add a?
Yes.
Natasha, you mentioned there would be a sea of parking. If, and it would not present well from Highland Avenue if, if the phasing were for the other building. But they're still be required to have the fifty-foot landscape setback. So what you'll see if you're you know, across the street from Highland Avenue or driving along, will at least be trees and vegetation and the running path. And the water feature and not, and not the cars, the way, of course, it, it has been. And I wonder if that will soften it enough for a delay in the construction. I, I, I appreciate you. I, I don't want to disagree with you, Natasha, but I just wanted to throw that in.
I think, I mean, the, what's, what, what was, what's compelling about this project is that it creates an edge, right, on, on, on the side that right now is a parking lot. And then to, to have the gateway to Needham be another parking lot, I think, would, would not be as advantageous as having it, have, you know, that building feels like it creates a corner opportunity, the restaurant, all of those pieces. And then that's a critical piece of the project. So to me, i- if, you know, and I appreciate that they want to phase it. That's not the issue. Phasing is okay with me. It's just, I think that I would feel more comfortable saying that that should be the first building, and then the second building would be the one in the rear.
Artie?
Yeah, I'm just questioning, I agree, Natasha, I agree with you that the first building, if it's happening that way, she'd be the one going along Highland Ave. I guess I questioned Jean when you were saying there would still be a path. You know, the walking running path going around the fountain. I actually questioned whether that would actually exist. I understand the buffer would be there. But if they're phasing this, would they, would they, would that fountain and the running path be part of that first phase? I'm not sure.
Remember, remember, they have to come back to us.
I, I understand. No, no, I agree. No, and I get that. And, but I'm, I'm not sure if it would, would. I, I, I might be perfectly fine if it's not, but it would, it might be a little interesting to see if it would considering it's a big vacant area where another big building is going up. So.
May I, may I respond to Artie and make sure Lee agrees with my response? I, I was very concerned about this, that all the amenities be built before there is any occupancy permit. Although there is a provision for temporary occupancy permit if there's a delay in something. But the whole idea is, even if they're phasing, they have to do all the amenities before they get an, any occupancy permit. Isn't that right, Lee, the way it's worded?
It's, but there's a, there's a, there's an exception to that, which, so it could be, an amenity could be bonded. So.
That's true.
So the amenity may not necessarily be there. And then, then if you, if you phase it, then, you know, the amenity, you know, the amenity.
The intent, that's like them deliberately, you know, not installing those municipal benefits. The purpose of the bond is, is to require them to do it, and there is a temporary delay because of, you know, it could be supply chain issues. It could be of other issues, not that they're intending to not, you know, to obfuscate from their responsibilities. Paul, you have your hand up?
Yes. The issue that I have, and I think this is a, a simple drafting situation, is that the way I read the decision, they only have to file a phasing plan with us. It's not subject to our approval.
I thought it was.
To change that language.
Where are you, Paul? I thought it was subject to our approval, but.
I, you know, I didn't print the agreement. Let me see if I can find phasing.
Well, it says in, in, in item three, three point three seven G, it says the board shall have received and approved a phasing plan.
Yes, exactly.
The project.
Yeah, it does say that. The board shall have received and approved a phasing plan. Okay. My mistake. I take it back. Forget I said it.
So, so we've forgotten, Paul. Meanwhile, we, at the beginning, you had wanted to bring over Robert Slager and Tim Sullivan.
Yeah, I think Alex was gonna do that.
Alex, are we able to bring them over? We can see you both.
They're unmuted. Hi, everyone.
Hi, everyone.
Hi. Nice to see you all, particularly at two thirty in the afternoon as opposed to ten thirty at night.
We're eleven, eleven thirty at night.
Eleven thirty at night, right? I, I was just gonna say, so the solar ready, it changes fine, and I just wanted to provide clarity on the phasing. This draft is actually tighter than what we talked about the other night. That, we are absolutely required to file, and you approve a phasing plan before there's any phasing. So Natasha, the, which building goes first or any of that, that would all be subject to that phasing plan, which is a prerequisite. So, you know, there shouldn't be any concern on that point that we could do anything different. And that's a little, that is tighter than what we had talked about on Monday night. So I know you mentioned that the conversation started because that you were looking at the, the meeting. The, the draft actually now requires a phasing plan in a way it didn't when we talked about it on Monday night.
So, but in general, just my question is, is there one building that you think is more advantageous for you to build first?
I, so I, I think the, the honest answer is, Natasha, no. And having done this for, for many decades now, whatever phasing plan we propose today will change, and I'm sure you know that from your experiences as an architect. So it's very difficult to come up with a location and, and a building type. I think the honest answer is, we'll come back to you when, as and if we're fortunate enough to attract the tenant. If Apple Computer comes and says they need two hundred and forty thousand square feet, I'm sure we're all gonna work together to try and attract Apple Computer to the facility as a Massachusetts headquarters type of operation, whether it's the north building or the south building. But, but clearly that phasing plan would be subject to your approval and subject to us submitting an amendment to the special permit.
So is there anything else outstanding, or can I move? So if there's nothing else, can I have a motion to grant the following relief?
Adam, Adam, I just have one question for Paul. So I just one question for Paul. Paul.
Oh, wait a minute. I, I actually have to listen to you. Okay.
Yes, you do. Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, one, one second, one second, Paul, one second. Okay, so Paul, when you were looking at the language for putting the solar going in the north and south buildings, you said something about you didn't like the fact that there was the word in there about this granting of a variance, and you said you wanted to delete some part of it.
So, no, I, I, I was just questioning where, where, where a variance would even be
Okay.
Necessary.
Okay, that's fine. Okay.
This is subject to a special permit. I don't.
Okay.
Can, can, can put the word in there, and I, I, I said, you know, where, where where is there a situation here where it's going to require a variance? So.
Okay, that's good. I'm good.
And the recitation of relief that's about to be made, I, I think will include the garage being solar ready. Is that what I understand from the discussion?
The plan modify, I'll, I'll, I'll change the plan modification section to include a solar ready garage.
Wait till you, wait till you hear my motion, Jean.
Well, okay. I'm going to read. Adam, I'm gonna, as I usually do, I'm gonna read the entire long paragraph where it says that therefore the book.
I understand.
Grant.
I had already had it summarized, but you go ahead. If you want it, you go ahead.
So if we have any other questions, can we ask them now? Or, I mean, are you?
I, I think we should, Natasha.
Yeah.
Just, just a couple of questions. Lee, where, I know we talked about it, and, and, and Robert had mentioned that there was something on the, the mechanicals and sound, you know, acoustics review and all of that. Where is that in here?
Um, there's a review of the, of the generator. But it's lim, on the acoustic side of it, but it's limited to the generator.
Can we add just the mechanicals, just to review the acoustics? Because there are the neighborhoods around there, the, the, these machinery.
Absolutely. Mass state law actually requires it. So that, that's fine. Anything to do with any noise generating equipment, whether it's mechanical equipment, exhaust fans, generators, that, that type of stuff.
Okay, I'm, I, Natasha is currently structured so that they're providing that sound information to the building commissioner. As I, I put it in for the generator, but it's currently structured so that they're providing that sound information for the generator to the building commissioner, who is then basically reviewing it for compliance with the state codes and is requiring, you know, a sound study at the end to make sure that what's on the ground is, is compliant with that. But it's all being processed, that component of it, all being processed through the building, through the building commissioner.
Okay, and then the other piece is on two point O A about the number five, about articulate roof screen with materiality. We had also mentioned depth and depth. You know, to trend and, and and trends, I got, the transition to sky, I don't know what that means. Does that, that it, that it's, that it's more perforated at the top?
Yes.
Okay.
So what, how do you?
Yes.
Excuse me. Gosh, what I do.
No, Jean, we can hear you. Okay.
Oh, okay. Yeah. I was trying to raise my hand, and I caused everything to disappear. All right. I, I had marked a prior version on, on plan modifications two O A. At the time of the last hearing, or rather, just a meeting where we discussed the draft, I wrote down the exact changes that Natasha wanted. And I think that may be what you're referring to now. Natasha. And it said create third floor setback, third floor material to create notch, create notch, articulate roof screen with these are the words, depth and materiality to, to transition to sky. And these were your words too, so as not to present a single plane.
Right.
That's correct. And we agreed to that.
Can, can we add the motion, can we add those words to section two point O A?
Yes, I think she has that under, that, we tried to grab that, I think, under that subsection five, and probably just needs to be fleshed out a little because it just basically says articulate roof screen with materiality.
So we just want to add. So we want to add with depth and materiality to transition to the sky such that this facade is not on one plane. Is there anything further?
No, I just, I just wanna, and I, Robert, I understand exactly what you're saying. It depends on what kind of a building it is and everything. You're gonna have to come back anyway. I still think that we, that we should put in there that if there is phasing, that we would, you know, that we would like building the one on Gould, the one on Highland to be built first. And then if you come back and say that we have a client that has this, whatever it is, that's fine, because the whole point was for this, for, for the site to have an edge and to have that restaurant, you know, and all of that. So I, again, I understand.
Natasha, we actually have decided unfortunately not to grant a restaurant.
No, we, while we've, we've called out a restaurant use as being allowed, and we've just required that restaurant to come in for a special permit to work out the details on their operation.
Okay.
So.
So it's anticipated.
I didn't hear that in the, in the, in the meeting.
Yes, I think it was in the meeting before that.
Yeah, that you were, that you were.
That I was present?
Yeah, where we said that there were too many issues involved with a restaurant to just allow it now. Because when we grant the special permit to allow a restaurant, there, there are. to allow a restaurant, there, there are so many issues that are involved in the operation of the restaurant itself. But I mean, that's the floor plan and, you know, all that.
I, 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 I think if I can clarify, the intent was the restaurant use is approved, but the actual restaurant itself is not approved until we present the type of restaurant.
Correct. Okay, yes. I remember that. I thought, Adam, you just said that the restaurant was not approved. So I, I, I apologize. Yeah, I remember saying that you have to come back for a special permit to understand the details of that particular restaurant. Yes, okay. I, I remember that. I didn't remember. I thought, Adam, you said we got rid of the restaurant use. So I apologize.
Well, it's not part of the current relief being sought. It was for their initial, you know, application, but we've decided not to, the board decided not to go forward with that, uh, special, with that relief at this time.
Correct, but it can be, it can, they can come back with a special permit with more information and that can be considered.
Correct. We, we, we would come back with a request for an amendment to the special permit.
Right, right.
Would incorporate, um, for lack of argument, Smith and Malensky Steakhouse. Uh, beer and alcohol till, you know, ten P M. The restaurant must close at ten thirty type of thing.
May I suggest to get back to the phasing question? May I suggest language to three point three seven G? The board shall have received and approved a phasing plan for the project as described in paragraph one point five of this decision. Comma, preferably with phase one, including the South Building. It is the South Building that's, that's on Highland Avenue, right?
That's what Natasha said, but I don't think that. I understand what you're saying, Natasha. But the design, but if they get to a point where they have one tenant and let's just, you know, and they wanna proceed with one building, the whole plan could change. They're gonna have to.
Understand, but and they have to come back anyway for it.
Um, right. So there may be characteristics where, where, that we don't know anything.
But if they sell the land, for whatever reason, Robert, I don't want you to sell the land, but if you sell the land, I want it on there that we want that, that it was said that that one building creates an edge for the site and that it should be built first. And they have to come back anyway.
Sure. So I, I have no problem saying, uh, the way Paul worded that, just change it a little bit. The planning board prefers the South Building be constructed first.
For phase one, right?
For, for, I, I don't know about phases, but the plan would prefer the South Building be constructed first. And I would require that the phasing plan be submitted at the time of application, Paul, as opposed to shall, shall have reviewed. If we don't submit, then you really can't review. Read, read back again what, what.
Yeah, Paul, I think at the beginning of G, it should say if applicable, because I mean, we may not phase the project.
Right.
Right.
Correct. If applicable, sounds, sounds good.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's just settle. I don't wanna be left here with fiddling with this.
So G, three point three seven G. If applicable, the board shall have received and approved.
No, no, it should, should say if.
Application should include.
Right, good.
Excuse me, oh, the.
A phasing plan for approval of the project can, and, um, as described in paragraph one point five of this decision or whatever, and then also saying, um, the, the, the board prefers um, the building.
The South Building, the South Building.
Is that the correct building? Because if we put the wrong one.
Yeah, it is. It's correct.
The South Building on Highland Avenue to be, um, built first.
First.
Yeah, I do think, Paul, your first comment at the beginning of G, it should say if applicable.
Yes, correct, correct.
Yep.
Yep. Okay. I would just in terms of grammar, I would say the board preferring rather than the board prefers, but.
Yep.
Um, that, that assumes it's not a separate sentence. It's a simple following phrase.
Now, we're gonna, we're, we've got twenty minutes left before we lose Natasha. So can I now have a motion to grant the following relief?
Are we, are we ready then? No more changes, guys? Okay. So I move that the board grant a major project site plan review special permit under section seven point four of the bylaw and article two of the planning board rules. That the board grant a special permit pursuant to section four point eleven point one per N five close per N of the bylaw to increase the floor area ratio to one point two one. That the board grant a special permit pursuant to section four point eleven point one per N one close per N to increase the maximum height of the North Building to seventy feet. That the board grant a special permit pursuant to section four point eleven point one per N one close per N of the bylaw to increase the maximum number of stories of the North Building to five. That the board grant a special permit pursuant to section four point eleven point one per N one close per N of the bylaw to increase the maximum height of the South Building to forty two feet. That the board grant a special permit pursuant to section four point eleven point one per N one close per N of the bylaw to increase the maximum number of stories of the South Building to three. That the board grant a special permit pursuant to section three point two point seven point two per N D close per N of the bylaw for retail use by a single tenant of between five thousand seven hundred and fifty to seven, to, to ten thousand square feet as part of the project. That the board grant a special permit to pursue into section four point eleven point two per N one close per N to increase the maximum height of the garage to fifty five feet. That the board grant a special permit pursuant to section five point one point one point five of the bylaw for a deviation from the required number of parking spaces under the bylaw. Section five point one point two for the project to provide one thousand three hundred ninety parking spaces. And that the board grant a special permit pursuant to section six point eleven point five of the bylaw for deviations from the design requirements for retaining walls. All subject to and with the plan modifications. No, all, all subject to and with the.
Benefit of.
Of the plan modifications, conditions and limitations as set forth in the decision.
As modified by our discussion.
Well, the decision, when we vote the decision, the decision's gonna be.
Okay, fine.
With the modifications.
We usually do say as modified. Per question, as part of the.
Well, we haven't voted, we haven't voted the decision yet. The decision, when, when I make the motion to approve the decision, it's gonna be with the modification.
Oh, excuse me, Paul. Of course. Thank you.
May I, may I just verify something with the, with the.
Hold on, when we come to discussion, we have a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
We have a, we have a motion by Paul, a second by, uh, Natasha, Artie, you wanted to discuss something?
Yeah, I just wanted to verify in the parking garage. I know there was a section where it's decreasing the height down to forty eight feet, then the maximum four stories. How is that fitting in again? How is that fitting in? And again, as far as the actual construction of this project and the final approval?
So it was gonna be fifty, it, it's four stories, four, four levels facing Gould Street. And it may be fifty five feet.
I understand that, but when, when is that? I wanna verify when is that coming into play as far as our approval of that plan?
They need to file that as a plan modification before they can get a building permit on the property. There is, as a result of, as a condition of this, there are certain plan modifications that are required. So they will be modifying the plans to meet the plan modifications that are here. Um, you'll see those plan modifications, and then once they're approved, they'll go to the building inspector for a building permit.
That's the mechanism.
Thank you, Lee.
Any other discussion, Artie?
No.
Okay. So any discussion from anyone else? Hearing none will come to the vote. Uh, Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Natasha Spata.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the decision dated December twenty two, including revisions made to at this hour in respect to this application?
So just to clarify, I have the following modifications in my list. Um, the modification to allow, um, solar, to require solar ready on the garage. Uh, the modifications to address the issues that Natasha raised on the screen on the top of the South Building to, you know, include the depth. Um, and so that it's not presenting as a single plane. Um, the modifications to, um, require the sound studies coming through the building inspector for approval compliant with state requirements for the, all the mechanical equipment on the roof. Um, and then I think the indication of the facade preference along the South Building if the project is phased.
And the change of the language in three point three seven G about phasing.
She just mentioned that. She mentioned.
What I meant when I, when I talked about the facade preference for the South Building. And, and that language change. Yes.
Not just the facade preference, it's also the, that, that the so, that if this phasing.
If the phasing is done, right.
Yeah, preferably the South Building being the first constructed. Right, if applicable.
Okay, so we, we have that. Any, if there's nothing else, then, uh, we have a.
Yeah, actually, yeah, actually, Mr. Block, I just want, the only thing I just wanna comment on is that in the future, I'm not sure how we're gonna handle these setback issues as far as you know, thirty foot, fifty foot setback, you know, for example, if a property had a thirty foot setback. Now, I mean, if the fire department comes in and says, you know, we need a ten foot lane plus five foot on either side. I don't know how we're gonna handle that. I know it's.
Let's discuss that at another time.
No, I, I understand that. No, I understand. No, I'm not, I'm sorry. My, my apologies. I'm not looking to discuss it now. I just wanna keep it in our minds as far as what happens in the future. I didn't mean to make it a discussion now. Just please keep it in mind because I was, I was on the verge of voting no. But I voted yes because some of the, some of the changes we made and, and I didn't want, I already stated, I didn't wanna penalize them for the fact that the fire department wanted that. I just wanted us to keep it in mind for the future as far as how are we dealing with setbacks and what's really going on in there. That's all. So.
We can do with that, uh, you know, by definition within various sections. It's a good note. Thanks for bringing it up and you know, we can talk about it when we're dealing with, uh, various planning issues. So we have a motion, I think, by Paul to approve the decision dated December twenty two in respect of the application, including any revisions, uh, made to at this hour. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Paul, a second by Jean. Any further discussion? Hearing none will come to the vote. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Natasha Spata.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So we've approved the relief and we've approved the decision, uh, as modified. Uh, unless there's anything, uh, actually, I do have something else. Um, just a little, just a note, and then I'll take a motion to adjourn. Um, we, uh, there are a number of things that we wanna start thinking about for May town meeting. It's actually late to start thinking about for May town meeting. We may have to reflect it for the special town meeting in May. But there might be, you know, if there's an opportunity, I'd like to pursue it for some very specific actions, uh, you know, to improve our bylaw. One, perhaps dealing with ADUs, two, dealing with, uh, three car garages in the, uh, 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 senior resident, uh, uh, SRB district. Uh, um, redefining, uh, or, or re changing our definitions of setback to be able to include certain uh, mechanicals, including energy efficiency. And also if there's an opportunity to address any other housing items, you know, from the housing plan or some of the immediate top uh, items to pull out from the, like, solar canopies uh, from the climate action, uh, committee. Uh, you know, we need to start thinking about that immediately and start putting together a list of the, you know, the actual draft uh, of those bylaw changes. Uh, because we would need to submit final language. Uh, you know, the legal notice. And then vote to send the language to the, uh, select where we've gotta do all that by February seven, which is only really three meetings from now. So we have a very short window. I'd like to see us take some reasonable action this May to affect some of the change that you know, that Jean, uh, you and Natasha have been advocating for and that, uh, Artie, you've been advocating for and uh, that the board has been looking to. So over the holiday break, please, you know, think about those very specific initiatives. And then we can work with town staff to get those drafted in proper form. Sound good?
Yeah, and what, what is the timeline for?
So the timeline is, we have to finalize the lang, this is from what we had sent to us all. We have to, uh, by February seven, finalize the language to include an illegal notice.
That's for the special. I think that's for the special, right, Adam? And.
It just says for, for, this is for the annual. You said tentative schedule for zoning article.
Yeah, Lee, that's for the annual. That's the very latest possible, just to be clear. I drafted it based on the deadline to get the language to miles. So that's the latest.
The absolute latest, and then we have.
Yes, we, we normally have it done in January. That's why when you said the seventh, I was a little nervous about that extra.
So end of January.
End of January.
And then legal notice, the last day for the legal notice to go to the newspaper such as there is, if there is one, uh, is February ten. Then the select board has to refer it back to the planning board by February fourteenth Valentine's Day. That's kind of romantic for us. And then on February sixteenth, uh, post the notice with town clerk and it runs first in the newspaper. February twenty third is the second run in the newspaper. Then, uh, we would have a, a hearing on March seven. And then we'd finalize the language, making it only more restrictive and not broader, if there's any change, on March fifteenth for the warrant for miles. And then, uh, May first is the annual town meeting.
But, but we're allowed, we're allowed some language modification after that's submitted.
So we're only, the final, so the, the final language for the warrant is March fifteenth. And that would be a week after the hearing. But that final language change already would only be allowed to make it more restrictive, not broader. Um, and if I'm not mistakenly, I think any of these items that I've discussed, except those specifically relating to housing, including ADUs. But not in, and I don't know what, how, what the requirement is for the three car garage would really require a super majority, not a straight majority, correct?
Well, the, yes, it, it, the hu- housing is exempted from the, from the super majority, but other than that, it's a super majority.
Including a three, including the three car garage.
I would think so.
I don't, I don't think that would fall under the, um, new.
We're unclear.
Majority vote.
We'll look in.
I also, into that. I also don't think we'll have a problem at town meeting having the three car garage pass, but that's, that's just my take.
But we need to get it all drafted up and get it onto the schedule. And, uh, one second. And I might, uh, lastly, I, you know, we might need to call additional meetings in order to be able to get these things up and organized. Paul, go ahead.
I'm going, Mr. Chair. Because I think that, you know, I'm sure we're gonna have a lot, a lot on our plates for the regular meetings on January third and, and January seventeenth. So I would suggest that we schedule a special meeting just to discuss uh, the, the, um, bylaw proposals for sometime in the week of January ninth.
Let, let me say this. I think that we're gonna, the January meeting might be easier than we think. Um, Alex, refresh me if I'm wrong. I think we thought that Pinella's decision, um, would be done the second, um, meeting in January, and I think that that basically opens up really that whole January meeting predominantly for zoning. Am I correct?
Um, well, there was gonna be that, um, informal presentation on eight eighty eight Great Plains Avenue.
Which is, which is zoning related.
Yes, true. Um, and I'm opening up the agenda now.
You, you talking about January seventeenth or January third?
January third, I think is, I, I think it's gonna be a meeting that's gonna have some time to talk about planning issues. Um, but most of the hearings that we, we, you were involved in, whether it's one hundred eighth or the uh, one hundred West Street or the subdivision and, um, even Coca-Cola are, are moved out to the second meeting in January and the first of February. So I think that first meeting in January is, is a real good window to talk about these issues. Um, and in addition to that, we did get some, we were. Um, and in addition to that, we did get some, we were, we were contacted by George Genta. They're interested in having a conversation again about the rezoning of that property on Great Plain Avenue. Um, um, across from, um, the, the field, um, at the next planning board meeting. You had some preliminary conversations about that.
You're talking about eight eighty eight?
Yes. So that would be on the January agenda. We were just recently contacted by him. Um, then we could do the ADU conversation and maybe a conversation on the garages. Um.
I also want. Natasha, I'm gonna chat with you offline. Uh, about some of the climate action stuff.
That's what I was gonna bring up. Climate action also, Artie and I should. Um, talk about that in one of the meetings as well, because.
So what, specifically by January third. You know, with a short list of action that you wanna take.
We have a meeting on, at the end, the last, um, the Friday of the first week of January. I think it's the sixth, the fifth or the sixth. And that's our last meeting for my zoning group. Um, I don't know, Artie, what, when your group is meeting last, but that.
We're, we're taking a doodle poll. We're, we're meeting, we're meeting before the main climate action committee meets again, which I think is around January twelfth, give or take. I think it's around that. We're gonna, we're gonna meet before then. I know that. And I know, and I, I certainly know in our group, the main thing of hitting the top priority right now is the tree bylaw. And whether it's gonna be this May, or at least hopefully by the latest next fall.
Yeah, I think probably as a practical matter, the easiest, I mean, this is, we, this is a very tight window. I think if we can get the ADUs done and the garage done. And this project on Great Plain Avenue done in the spring, that would be, um, quite an accomplishment.
I think also the, the, the solar, sorry, solar is.
There are some, there are some climate action items that I wanna see on for me.
They're low hanging fruit, yeah.
Look, January third.
Just keep in mind, the zoning for that has to be written in January, so you need to know exactly what you want to do in order to be able to put it into zoning language.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I'd be looking, I'd be looking for the solar.
Hold on, Artie, Paul, Paul wanted to speak before. I'll come back to you, Artie.
January third is less than two weeks away. And we have two holiday weekends. We have two Monday holidays. In between. January second is a, is a legal holiday. This coming Monday is a legal holiday. Mr. Chair, if you and the people who are involved are, can be, can, can be ready for January third. With wording for us, for what you wanna propose. Fine, we can discuss it January third. But, you know. You got a lot of work to do between now and when we're ready to discuss this.
Fortunately, guys, I'm available and happy to help. Does someone wanna make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion to adjourn a second. There's discussion, and Jean, you had your hand up, so now's the time.
Oh, uh, I, it's on my agenda, um, on my list of to, to do's to call John Schneider. Um, of the zoning, chair of the zoning board of appeals. Um, I was asked to do that, and I will. Uh, to discuss the, um, garage issue, and I think I, it would also be good to discuss, um. The, um, ADU issue with him, since they come out of their, they're coming out of their experience reviewing these developments. So I will do that.
Good, okay. Uh, that's the motion to adjourn. That's the discussion. Uh, I also just wanna add to discussion. Uh, very, very happy holiday. Hopefully uneventful for all of us, but especially to Alex and to Lee. We will be thinking of you and your husband. And, uh, you know, have a safe and, uh. Uh, special holiday this year.
Have a good holiday, everyone.
I'm gonna take a vote, I'm gonna take a vote, uh, on our motion. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Natasha Spata.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We have adjourned our last meeting of twenty twenty two. Thank you all very much.